And I'm thinking that. One minute warning.
Hey, anytime.
My first time.
Hey, we can do that with the other.
Well, the only reason I say I don't even know if illegally can, I gotta find that out.
Yeah, it's a special district, I don't know.
But it's like so many meetings in summer, you're not dealing. Where are your fifteen minutes? Ten hut? Oh, no. I'd like to call the regular Monday, May eighth, twenty twenty-three Board of Fire Commissioners meeting to order. Please rise.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for five, or I'm sorry, eight firefighters in the month of April across the U.S. who lost their lives. Dear God, we give honor to those that have given themselves to serve others, and these eight heroes, Lord, we thank you for them. I pray that you'll be with their families during this time of loss, give them comfort and strength. And, Lord, as always, we ask for protection for our firefighters here in Benita and the area. Watch over them, guard and just protect them, Lord, from the danger that they present themselves to each and every day. Thank you for looking over us as a nation and as a city, and pray that we will always look to you for guidance. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody have a public comment on an agenda item this evening? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve April twenty twenty-three meeting minutes, uh, the April tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion, one motion for April twenty twenty-three incurred expenditures and ACH payments, acknowledgement of financial reports, acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts and POs over ten thousand. Some were budgeted, some were unbudgeted. There's a list there on your agenda. Need a motion to approve those.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioners' business. Anybody have anything you want to talk about?
This is probably going to be covered, Chairman, but I just wanted to ask where we're at with the sale of our, our building.
So, um, we've kind of put that on the back burner. We wanted to get back into rescue business before we get into the restaurant business. So, right now, we're still shooting for a June-July date to get into Station Twenty-Seven, and I'll go into more detail on that. So, as soon as that's done, uh, we will go out to a broker and talk to them to see what our best option is on selling that parcel of land. I know, I've mentioned before, we've still had three to four, uh, restaurateurs that would, that have already approached us to buy it. Uh, and again, we know on the open market, it may fetch a little bit more than a restaurant. Uh, like we said, Meditera's supposedly been sniffing around. They have not contacted us yet, but there is still talk out there for it to go back to be a restaurant, so.
It looks painted.
It, it's just been all cleaned up. Everything's, we've had it all graded. Uh, we're waiting on a few things from the, uh, from the gas tank to get pressurized to some other things. So, no, it's, it's getting all cleaned up, and I'll go into more detail on my report. But, so we're just waiting to get in that, so I don't want to muddy the waters like, you know, I don't want to have to run down there to do stuff for the, for the, to show the restaurant, then to, then to go back down there for that. So, we'll concentrate on one thing and then go down that road.
I think the people are happy, but, you know, things are moving along.
Yes, yeah, I think so. I hope so.
I'd like to thank, uh, the City of Benita Springs for their birthday party and the way they treated our district and all of our members that were there.
That was really good. Um, I've got a, I've got something I want to bring up. I've had a discussion with the chief about it, um, with the, uh, gas leak that we had a week ago.
Yeah.
As representatives of the public, I think that TECO Gas did not a very good job on knowing where the shut-off valves were, um, knowing how to shut down a four-inch line that got hit with, um, you know, construction equipment. Uh, I thought it was a, there was a huge hole there on, on the response. Our response, thank you to everybody, was incredible. Um, I think that they dropped the ball, and I wanted to bring it to the Commissioner's attention that I know, uh, the chief has called, uh, TECO and is in a pipeline waiting to talk to somebody. Um, but I think from a safety standpoint, both for our people and our residents, I think that, uh, it, it, it's mind-boggling that they couldn't tell you where the shut-offs were for a four-inch line, and they're riding around and ended up crimping the line to shut it off. I, I think that's totally unacceptable from where we sit. That's all I got to say about it.
I, I was unaware of that. So, has TECO not gotten back to you yet?
So, so what happened was, just to give you a brief overview, so, construction crews hit a four-inch line. Uh, at that time, we shut everything down, backed everybody away, had lines pulled. TECO representative showed up fifteen, twenty minutes after the incident started. His comment to me is, let me go find the, the shut-off valve. After about fifteen, twenty more minutes, uh, he came back to the scene, says, "I can't locate the shut-off valve. We need to unearth it or dig another hole, not where the actual, uh, pipeline was hit." So, we moved it about, moved it to the east about three, four hundred yards, redug a hole, relocated it, and used what they call a, a four-inch Mustang squeeze tool to squeeze off the pipeline. You know, all in all, we were on scene approximately an hour, hour and fifteen minutes. Um, of that hour and fifteen minutes, forty-five minutes to an hour was, uh, you know, four inches gas line ruptured.
So, so while we're on scene, our guys are, are in danger sitting there with this stuff flowing out, waiting for them.
We had an inner hour circle, but yeah, we never put anybody in harm's way unless we had to. Uh, so, going back to it, I've called TECO and said, "Hey, look, this is unacceptable. Can we talk to a dispatcher? I find it hard to believe that you don't know where the shut-offs are." I mean, we have a mapping system that could tell us where every hydrant is through B S U, so, you know, I don't know why they don't have that. Uh, when I talked to the East Coast dispatcher, he said they do, but I don't, I, I, the West Coast dispatcher hasn't called me back. I talked to him on Thursday afternoon.
Yeah, we, we, we probably need to go above them.
So.
And get hold of someone who can.
And, 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 you know, I, I think they should know where it is, because at the end of it all, once they cramped it, the, uh, TECO worker came to me and I heard him talking to another worker, saying, "Look, we've got to go to B S U and tell them, we need to lock out their, uh, their meter. We need to go to Liberty Youth, lock out their meter, and one or two other single-family residents on Morton." So, they knew where their customers were, they just didn't know where the main shut-off line would be on that line.
Well, it's unacceptable. So, I mean, I don't know how we're going to fix it, but it needs to be fixed.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Okay, Chief, got some presentations to do.
Some presentations, some promotions and promotional pinning. So, first, I'd like to start off with, uh, our new fire marshal. New old fire marshal. Eric's been here a little bit. You know, a little quick story about Eric. He's, you know, he's got his bachelor degree, he's a paramedic, fire officer two, inspector two, fire service instructor, MSA technician. You know, um, he was a fire inspector, started as a fire inspector. You know, a little bit of economic downturn happened, so he started doing all our pre-plans. So, he was going out and drawing pre-plans, using the, uh, the computer, our new computer system to do pre-plans, and, you know, an opening came up on the suppression side, and he goes, "Yeah, let me go try this." So, you know, he came over to the suppression side. He's one of, uh, firefighters on my shift, on B shift back then. You know, went out and got his paramedic, went out and got his, uh, you know, his, uh, fire service instructor, went out and got his, you know, his, uh, fire officer two, you know, all these different things. And, you know, when it was time to come back to the fire prevention side, we had an opening up there, or we thought we were going to have an opening up there. You know, he stepped up to the plate, said, "You know what? I think I can do my last little bit of time here." So, it was a great thing for him to come back, you know, with what happened with the previous fire marshal. I don't know what we'd be doing right now, um, as far as a fire marshal. And so, you know, Eric, I think, uh, held that division together during that tumultuous time. And, uh, you know, I think he did a great job, and I'm proud to promote him as the fire marshal. And his wife, Alicia, will come up and pin him. So, then there was Brad. So, you know, again, you know, Brad's an EMT. We stole him from the Seabreen area when he was a, he was a firefighter, fire inspector there, and he applied for a fire inspector job down here. So, we lured him down here. He's got a history, his, uh, family's in the fire sprinkler business. So, he came down here and became one of our fire inspectors. And, you know, as, as things progressed, we started doing our own fire, um, our plans review, and as they progressed, you know, Brad started taking a liking to it. We sent him over to the NFPA class, so Brad's an NFPA certified fire plans reviewer. You know, and when it was time when, uh, Fire Marshal Schultz guy promoted, you know, we started looking for a, a fire, for the, uh, assistant fire marshal and that. And so, through the interview process, Brad became that person that we decided to promote, you know. Brad is, is a great guy. Will stand up, will help you out, will go that extra mile every single time you ask him. Sometimes you don't even have to ask him. He'll just see you floundering there, scratching your head, looking at a fire extinguisher or a set of sprinklers or a plans review, and he's gonna, he's gonna be that guy that's gonna come there and help you. The only thing you don't want Brad to do for you is pack when you're going on a cruise. So, at this time, at this time, I'd like to congratulate Brad in being the assistant fire marshal. And his wife Haley's going to come up and pin him. Thank you very much. So, next on my list is our training captain. So, you know, we've had a training division a long time here at Benita Springs, start out with Don Cleland back in, you know, in the mid-nineties. And it's progressed up. We had Lou Delcello, God rest his soul. You know, then we had the great Paul Phillips, you know, again, God rest his soul, and, and Bill Clemmons. Then we got, you know, Kelly and John, and John moved on to, to green the pastures, and we had an opening. And so, one of the guys that, you know, kind of stepped up and applied for this is Colin. You know, Colin Boston, we, we lured him away as a firefighter through Paul Phillips, said, "Hey, this is a great guy. We stole him away from Ty's Fire Department, brought him down here to the Benita and showed him our way." You know, since that time, he's got his paramedics, he's got his associate degree, fire officer two. Um, he's a hazmat tech, incident safety officer. He's a USAR, he's on USAR, and he's teched out in all the disciplines. So, you know, in my mind, when he applied for it, you know, he was the only, he was the right choice for that job to be, to, uh, to be our new training officer. You know, he gives, he's got that all-in attitude. He's great with the, uh, crews. He cares about the fire department. He wants to make a difference in the fire service. He wants to train people how they need to be trained and how they're supposed to go out and do their job and protect the citizens of Benita Springs. So, at this time, I'd like to congratulate Colin for becoming the training captain, and, and his wife Blair will be coming up there with the kids to pin him. And I got no good stories. And finally, for, I'd like to congratulate Joe Sanderson. So, Joe has his associate degree, paramedic, hazmat tech, incident safety officer. You know, he's recently named a, a field training officer on A shift, fire officer two, he's instructor. He's part of our, um, part of our vehicle extrication team that just competed over in Miami on last Wednesday, Thursday, you know, and they were in the top five in, in the state of Florida or in the world, actually. They was represented by twelve departments, two of them included out of, uh, Canada. So, they, they've been working very, very hard about it. You know, Joe's one of those guys that give you his shirt off his back. I've seen him give his shirt off his back to some people. He's part of USAR with me, teched out and at. He went over to the surfside along with myself and Colin and Deputy Chief Schmidt. He's one of these guys that goes the extra mile. And he's been throwing some curveballs. When he got hired, just a quick story, you know, he's been through paramedic school twice because his house burned down and all his stuff was burnt down with the house, and the state of Florida, you know, kindly said, "You need to retake your test and you need to take the class." So, you know, in all of that, he's had a great attitude, great person to work with, and like I said, he'll do anything for you. So, congratulations to Joe Sanders. And he's got the most Phoenix Awards anybody else got. So, we're, we're looking at his EMS skills to see if he's really taken a pulse and see if these people are really dead. So, congratulations, Joe. And his wife Haley is going to come up here and pin him. Thank you. And that concludes the promotion pinning.
At this time, we'll take a short recess. If anybody wants to clear out, you're welcome to stay, but it'll take a couple of minutes if you want to go. Thank you all for coming. Now, we all have to stay to listen to Jeff, so.
I was gonna say, can I, can I leave now too?
I think we're good. Back to order. Need a motion, uh, for the disposal report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We got anything under old business?
No.
Uh, under new business, um, our audit presentation. Thank you, Jeff.
There he is. Thank you. Um, for the record, Jeff Brown, Ashley Brown and Smith, CPAs, and with me is my partner, Tony Smith, sitting back here to help with any questions that you may have. Uh, just going to hit a couple of high points. This is for the fiscal year end in September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Um, first thing in here, there is, is our, on page one is, I'm looking at, okay. On page one is our independent auditor's report. It's a little bit different this year than in prior years. They've kind of been changing the format of this around a little bit, but the point of it is, is they want us to express our opinion right, right at the top. So, again, this year, you get what we call an unmodified, a clean opinion. It states that, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, and all material respects the respective financial position of the activities. So, in English, that basically means that your staff is doing everything that they're supposed to. We didn't have any adjustments that needed to be made. Uh, your internal controls, everything was, was good, so we appreciate their efforts in keeping up with all the absolutely governmental accounting standards there. Um, if you haven't, on page four starts what we call the management's discussion and analysis. It's a narrative format. It's got some comparative charts and tables and things in here, and it just kind of provides a nice little oversight of, of some of the, the financial highlights for the year. Um, on page ten is your statement of net position. So, the purpose of this statement is to present the total, the assets and the liabilities as of that snapshot date as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And it not only presents what we call current assets, but it also has your non-current. So, buildings, vehicles, all your apparatus is on here as well as the, the liabilities. Um, but when you get this, there's a couple statements in here that are misleading, is not the right word, but I, I emphasize that snapshot date, because what happens is with this pension liability, over the years, I don't know if you remember, but way, way back when they first started this, I said, "This thing kind of gets a little funky sometimes with how, based on the market and with investment returns." So, I'll point a couple of things out to you here, but if you see something in there, if you're referring back to this one, and then also when we're here next year doing the same thing, some of this stuff will kind of reverse itself. But anyway, so like if you look at that second line from the very, very bottom, total net position's thirty-one million dollars. So, what that's saying is your assets exceeded liabilities as of that date by thirty-one million. And then if you flip over to page eleven, this is sort of how, how you get there. So, this is, we titled the statement of activities, but this is the full accrual version of your income statement and your profit and loss. So, it's, it reports the total revenues and expenses on that full accrual basis. But if you look down, it, there's that thirty-one million dollar number at the bottom of the page, but if you look up, the line, the line above it says it's negative one million. So, what happened was, at the beginning of the year, it was negative one, and now it's jumped up to thirty-one million the other way. Okay? So, just keep that in mind as, is what I'm saying. It's not misleading, it's correct, but there's just really, really wide fluctuations in here, which I'll, I'll attempt to clarify a little bit as we get, get into this a little more. But if you turn over to page twelve, this is what we, we've used to refer to as like the old governmental financial statement. So, this is your current assets, your current liabilities. So, it doesn't have the buildings and the vehicles and things in there. It doesn't have pension, it doesn't have any debt. But if you look down at the bottom, the third line up, it says you got unassigned fund balance of three-point-five million. So, and then above that kind of delineates what your assignments of your fund balances are, but basically, the point of this statement is as of that snapshot date, the district is financially sound. You've got adequate fund balance to, to move forward. Um, turn over to page fourteen. This is the modified accrual basis accounting statements titled statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. It's also an income statement or profit and loss similar to that second statement I showed you, but this is more of like cash in, cash out kind of thing. So, if you see there, the top number, total revenues, twenty-eight million, total expenditures, twenty-seven million. So, the net, your fund balance increased one-point-three million, where on that first one, it changed by thirty million dollars. So, that's why I'm saying that because of this pension thing, it, it kind of skews some numbers a little bit. Um, on page fifth, page eighteen, rather, is the notes to the financial statements. Uh, describes the organization and the reporting entity itself. Nothing too exciting or crazy in here. Um, if you turn all the way back to page sixty-two, is one of the other things that we check is, uh, the budget versus actual schedule. So, we're obviously looking and auditing to make sure that you're not overspending the legal authority of what you as the commission has set. So, the total expenditures, about two-thirds of the way down the page, you were under, there's a positive variance of about thirteen million there with the contingencies and, and reserves and that sort of thing. So, obviously, not overspent the budget in any, in any way. Um, the last thing I'll bring up about this pension thing is if you turn back to page sixty-nine, there's a schedule in here that's kind of laid this thing out over twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, all the way back for the last several years. But if you follow me down about two-thirds of the way, under that bold heading, plan fiduciary net position, about five or six lines, there's a, a line there that says investment income. And you can see in twenty twenty-two, you got a negative sixteen million dollar number. The year before that, over the next column, it's positive seventeen million. And then you go over another one, it's four million. So, the point I'm bringing it up to you is, you kind of have to look at that thing over a period of time because of the market fluctuation. And with the numbers being so large, I mean, if you get, for example, you've got a hundred million in a, in an investment, if it changes fifteen or twenty percent, that's twenty million dollars. That's more than your operating budget. So, when you get these wild swings like that, that's where it kind of impacts that, that net position so, so drastically. So, don't, you know, that, keep looking at the statements, obviously, but there, again, that snapshot date is just how it works. That's just what it was as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. So, that's just kind of why, why it's presented that way. Um, last couple of things here. Back on page eighty-four is another one of our reports to you. This is our report on internal control and compliance. The very last sentence on page eighty-four down there at the bottom says, "During our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses." And then, again, over on the next page, under the paragraph, compliance and other matters, uh, another positive statement. The results of our tests disclosed no instances, uh, disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. And the last couple of things in here is, uh, our report to you, our independent auditor's report to management. Some bold headings here talking about reporting requirements, prior audit findings, rules of the Auditor General, Florida statutes, all positive statements, complied with everything from a financial perspective that, that you're required to. So, with that, I'd happy to answer any questions you got. Yes, sir.
Does this capture our, our recent purchase of our building, this report?
No.
Next year, because we did it January one.
Okay.
Fiscal year ended September.
Sure of the date that we actually closed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Good.
I'm good.
As usual, nice job.
Yep, thank you. And, and yeah, it's, it's your staff. They, they, they do a great job, as you know, so we appreciate them as well, so.
We need a, we need a motion to accept.
So moved. So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And keep in mind, too, I mean, we work for you. We're into your, so if there's anything we could do during the year to, to help out, to explain some of this more, you know, feel free to, to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'd like to thank your staff as well, Lisa and her staff, and you guys. Nice job.
There's nothing to it, right, Lisa?
It's copy and paste.
Lisa says she wishes she could do more of this kind of stuff.
I tell it all the time.
We should do it twice a year.
I tell it all the time. It's just copy and paste.
All right, next thing, um, in your pack, you'll see, um, we've got a budget, uh, calendar draft, and the ones that are highlighted are the ones that affect us. So, um, we need to lock in those dates. So, sixteen through the nineteenth, does anybody have a preference of which one of those dates we do?
Uh, sixteen through the nineteenth of June?
Of May.
May.
So, it'd be a Wednesday, uh, Thursday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, right?
No, but I have a problem.
Tuesday, Wednesday, let's see.
I have a problem in June.
Um, May sixteen, seventeen, any, any time that week.
Correct.
Next, it's next week.
Yes.
Tuesday, Wednesday, uh, Thursday or Friday. Pick it. Which one works for everybody?
They all work for me.
I'm o, I'm okay.
Um, you want to do it the seventeenth?
If, yes.
Which would, what would you guys prefer? So, you know, none of us.
What day of the week is that? Tuesday?
That's a, seventeenth would be the Wednesday, but.
Okay, that's good. Seventeenth is a two, is the Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Wednesday afternoon at three o'clock.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
That work for you, Lisa?
Yes, sir.
Wednesday, May seventeenth, three P.M. Three o'clock.
Okay, now, the next date will be.
June twenty-eighth, unless there's an issue there. We have that date kind of already penciled in, just because it's the week before we get the final numbers in July.
So, what are you saying?
The twenty-eighth or the twenty-ninth.
What are you saying?
The twenty-eighth or, we got the twenty-eighth on there. If that's an issue, we can move it to the twenty-ninth. We'd like to have a workshop, because we'll have the, the preliminary numbers in, in June, and that would be right before that the, uh, final numbers come out in July.
The Ju, June twenty-eighth is the Wednesday. Is that, does that, that works for me? Does that work for everybody else? Are you okay with that, Steve?
Yep.
All right?
I think that's, that's actually, uh, Thursday.
Yep. I think that's, that's actually a Thursday.
28th of June is a Wednesday.
28th is a Wednesday. Excuse me.
Okay, and now that we go all the way down now to either August 29th or 30th, one or the other. I put down the 29th, but is that available? Everybody available on the 29th?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the final one is September 22nd at 5:01 to adopt the final millage and final budget.
And that one will be literally two minutes.
It'll be a two-minute meeting, but it's just a jump, jumping through the legal hoop and when nobody else is meeting at the same time.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that maybe throws a monkey wrench on, on the 22nd is, is the ad. So we have to run the ad. It's got to be ran seven days after we have the first meeting on the 12th. So our plan is to put it in on the 13th, have it run, and then the soonest we can have it would be the 22nd.
That shouldn't be a problem, though, right?
Shouldn't be. Unless something.
So that's a Friday.
Unless the city or school board has it on that date, but.
So I need a motion to approve those, the calendar?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That was easy.
Fire prevention fees.
If you recall, what this is, is, you know, back when Hurricane Ian hit, to help out the public and help out the, the, the construction, some of the condos, some of the commercial businesses, we waived our fees. So as of, as of the date, December 31st, total fees, ways, waived. Actually, as of April 30th, was 25,000. We're looking to reinstate those fees, go through the rest of this month, but reinstate them as June 1st, because I figure by June 1st, if they haven't applied for a permit or, or done that, you know, they're doing something else and we can't, can't.
Do we need a motion for that?
We should.
Let's do it. Okay, but I'm not sure we do need a motion, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that takes care of that.
By any chance, are we getting involved on, in May, on Memorial Day?
Uh, we'll just be, if, if the city has something, we'll go up there and be on stage, have our crews there, but.
I'm out of town.
But we will not be.
I think you are too, right?
We're both gonna be out of town. We won't be saying anything or doing anything.
All right. Chief, you're up.
So just real quick, and, you know, Station 27, it's moving along. Rough dry, rough electric, rough plumbing, rough framing is in, drywall is up, skip trowel is up. We've picked paint colors. All the sprinklers are in, all the alarms are in. The cheeky is being fixed next week, according to Sandy Osceola. He, he will be down rethatching it and straightening it up. Paint colors have been chosen. The cabinets are being built as we speak. I think right now, I think the cabinets are going to be the, I'll say the holdup. You know, they, they quoted us originally eight to 12-week build time. We, I've talked to them, they're going to try and push it to six weeks. So, so that, that's going to be the holdup, I think. The lift is all set. The lift is all set. Everything is all set up with the boat lift. We're just waiting on power to get to the building itself so we can test the boat lift, and they know that. So any questions on 27 right now? Okay. Just a reminder, June 5th, our next meeting is June 5th.
It's the fir, our next meeting is the first Monday, not the, not the second because of FASD conference. So it'll be the 5th.
Okay, just a reminder on that. The other thing to remind you, incredible awards, for those of you that are going, is May 25th at the Hyatt.
Okay.
Okay.
We have to tell Anna.
Anna Marie, yeah.
I'm not gonna make that one.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be gone. No, I'm not going. I'll be out of town.
Yeah, I'm not going either.
I'm looking at my calendar right now. Right, right this second.
The next one is business after hours. As a rule, you guys don't go to these. It's out of town. It's up in Fort Myers at the Alliance of the Arts. It's May 17th, 4 to 6. If you want to go, let Anna Marie know. I probably will not be going.
No.
Again, I, to echo what Commissioner Murphy said, you know, great job by all at the Celebrate Bonita. I heard it was a great event. I apologize, I, I missed it. But it was a great, great event. City did a great job with Lanco and, and the other.
And Kaylee.
And Kaylee.
And Mike.
And the crews did a, did a heck of a job there, so appreciate it. The other thing that's coming up, the Fourth of July Parade. It's already started. We've already started talking about it. We had a kickoff meeting with the city last Thursday, I believe, last Wednesday or Thursday, Wednesday. I think it was, you know, Frank Todd's in charge of it this year, and Nicole and Brian Hornberger are going to help out. So it's, it's already started. Same, same parade route, same things going on, so. Just so we know, legislative last Friday was their last day. No true real harm to special districts this year. I guess the only true harm is that we have to do, as the board members, you guys will have to do ethics training, which.
I think that's a good thing.
It's a good thing. City Council and all city and county commissioners have to do it now, you know.
We kind of do, we kind of do it anyway.
We, we do it anyway. FASD puts it on either at the annual conference, or they'll do it online. It's free to the members, so it's, it's a good thing. And the last thing I have, I spoke to.
When does that have to be done by? I didn't read the.
Usually it's done by.
I know it starts July 1st, but then you have, before the next fiscal year starts?
Before the next fiscal, fiscal year starts, it's usually, you have to check the box when you do your Form 1 as an elected official, is when you have to, you, you check that box, so.
So it does, if, if anybody's not going to the conference, then they'll have to get it online.
And they usually do, they can do it online. They usually do an online one a couple times.
Just so we all know that if, if we're not going to get it done at the.
Where do you go to online?
FASD. We'll, we'll get a, we'll get a link sent, because they, it's not a, it's not on your own. They'll have a class for, like a half a day that you'll have to sit in front of a computer and, you know, wheel the mouse and make sure you're still there.
Right.
The last thing I have is, I talked to Dr. Knight at Fitch and Associates. Because of the hurricane, they are a little bit behind. We're a little bit behind with getting them data. So they're saying we're about two to three months behind. So, you know, this week, I'll send a letter up to the President of the Senate, and she will forward it over to the Attorney General saying that, hey, this is where we're at. We should be two to three months, but because of the hurricane and we were affected by it. She's already, what's the word I'm looking for? She's already conveyed that there will be no penalty. There is no penalty in statute. You know, I'll, I'll be honest, we did have one legislature when we were up there in January, January, tell us, don't do it, and see what happens. But we don't want to do that. We want to do what, what's, what's right to us. So I know next year, FASD is working to get rid of that. So this may be the one and only time we have to do it, so we'll make it look good. Any other questions?
What's that going to cost the district?
$60,000. $59.95.
Wow.
As an unfunded mandate.
They're good at sending us unfunded mandates.
Yeah, between, between that and the audit is almost 100 grand.
Ouch.
And we have, are you through?
Yes, I am.
We have the reports from the chiefs and the fire marshal in there. If anybody had any questions on those. If not, public comment?
Just one other thing, Commissioner. Just an FYI, I did re-up our contract with Braxton College.
Yeah, I saw that.
And then, you know, we also put in there about the hurricane update, about what, where we're at so far on either monies that we have out, monies that we're anticipating getting back from FEMA. That's in your, in your, in your packet. The only thing that's happened since that time is the Lee County Property Appraiser and Tax Collector has given us a new update.
100.
Uh, the one that you've seen in here, I think it's right at 100,000.
100,000.
99,000. So since that time, since this writing, they sent us another one. Now it's up to 182,000 dollars.
Oh.
That we're, have to refund out of the 11,500 and some odd applicants. Of that 971, I think, was.
Well, it's a one-time anomaly, hopefully.
Well, and, and, you know, I was talking to the auditor about it. It's a one-time, let's call it rebate, but now we'll use one of our employees who was, whose house is devastated, who is not livable, who he is going through the process now of suing the insurance company. It's, could be two years, but, you know, let's say last year that house was worth 600,000 dollars. Now, this year, on the tax roll, it's only going to be worth a couple hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, that, that's an anticipated.
I wonder under the Save Our Homes where that starting point will be again.
Yeah.
Hmm?
Yeah, who knows?
Because technically, if it, it starts at 200 again or whatever, that's where it's going to be the base for the Save Our Homes at 3%. That's an interesting, didn't think about that, but that's an interesting concept there. That could.
So, yeah.
But it's not that much. It's really, in the big picture, it's not all that much. Could have been a lot worse.
No, yeah, we're talking two cents. You know, when we look at our taxable value, it's almost just less than two cents.
Chairman, before you adjourn, can I ask the Chief Brode a question, please?
Sure.
Chief Brode, I have two questions regarding electric vehicles. Have, have any of our personnel been hurt from responding to vehicle accidents involving an electric vehicle? And have you guys found, the guys on the street, found that the accidents are more severe now because some of these electric vehicles, because of the battery weight, are almost double the weight? And has that affected the injuries that you're, you're responding to with electric vehicles?
Good question. None of our guys have been hurt responding to that, and I don't know if we've noticed the, the difference in increased injuries in some of these accidents. So it's still some data we can definitely, you know, start earmarking, looking at.
Yeah, I was just wondering. I read a lot, and they mentioned that that was a problem nationwide. I didn't know if it's affecting us here or not. Thank you very much.
Not, not a big, that we've noticed, and, you know, that we can pinpoint and say that this is what it is.
But it appears to be a concern, as Jeff mentioned.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, they're, they're concerned in a lot of ways. Thanks.
Recently, Bonita Springs Utilities had their insurance review and renewal. And one of the things the insurance person said is that certain triggers will kick in when sustained winds are held to a certain point, and you have to measure in different locations around the city. I was wondering if we have someone that could explain our new fire stations, weather stations, to the BSU.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be more than happy between myself and Deputy Schmidt and Deputy, or Assistant Chief Brode. You know, we were very involved when we were putting them up in real time. And I will say that during that gas leak, we used that. Instead of calling Fort Myers, downtown Fort Myers, and say, hey, where's the wind coming out of? On the way there, I pulled it up on my phone and, and said, hey, look, at Station 4, winds are out of the west, north, west, southwest at 4 miles an hour, gust at 10 miles an hour in the last 10 minutes.
So they will have to set a PIN of a couple of locations. I'm thinking 22 and 24 might be those PINs that they could use rather than putting in another weather station.
Do they could? I mean, I know that the Weatherstem program has no problem with putting them, they would have put them in every one of our stations had we asked. It's just making that commitment that after the four years, Andy? After four years, we're on the hook for the maintenance.
Okay.
They hope to get it every year approved by DEM, and they've had it approved for, through DEM for the last eight years, but they, they can't make that guarantee.
Have we thought about doing a partnership with BSU and the city for other locations?
We, we, we haven't.
Or is it all individual?
Uh, we probably could, if they wanted to put it, like, let's use BSU. If they wanted to put something out at their, their wastewater plant right by 75 in the middle of that, let's say there's an open uninstructed area. Now, I mean, that's why we picked the two locations, somewhere closer to the beach and somewhere out here. Because, you know, with the onshore winds are, are different. Like, we pulled it up right now because of late in the day and the weather. I'm sure that the onshore west wind is different than it is out.
Has LCSO done anything with that?
Not really. I don't think they've got anything. Andy, do you know?
If they, if they decide to put it at BSU, BSU would have to sign a contract with Weatherstem. They have to sign off on using their location. So it would be their agreement.
They could pick it back off of us right now, couldn't they? Because you said they can access all our information for free.
You, I don't, yeah, they could, they could, they could access our real-time weather anytime. You go to lee dot weather stem dot com, and you can pick up any weather station out there. The advantage of having your own gives you data, gives you real-time pictures, gives you access to any pictures. Like, if we, right now, if I wanted to go to New Orleans and see what it looked like at Station 7 in New Orleans, I could log in and look at their live picture.
Oh, you don't get that without.
Without that. You could go there and look at it, and all you see is that snapshot and what it is. Like, as a member, you can go and say, all right, what's the weather like in Syracuse, New York last month? How much rain did they normally have in a year? You can pull that, that data stream down.
Okay, thank you.
So that, that's the difference between, and again, it, you don't have to be a fire department. Right now, I know, we have two, San Carlos Park has a couple, Astero has one, FGCU has one or two and some other, there's like eight of them in Lee County right now. Cape, I think, has a couple. So it doesn't have to be just fire departments. I think it has to be non-for-profits, which BSU would.
They would qualify.
Would qualify as a co-op.
That's what I'd like to explain to them.
Okay. We can get them, our stuff, and we can get them in contact with the personnel up there. Very, very easy to work with.
Chief, do we still use foam to put out fires?
We do use Class A, Class A and Class B, but they are the non-PIFA. They are the universal green.
Because I, I read in the paper that there's some hazardous problem with that.
Yeah, we've done away with that three years ago, three, four years ago.
Okay, but, but not on the airports, right?
Uh, I think, I, I don't think so, not the airports. They still use.
They have too much of it, and they're not required to get rid of it, so.
And we're not required to get rid of it either. It's just, makes good sense.
Okay, any public comment this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, meaning adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Steve.